All right, it is 5:32 PM. Let's call to order the January 7th, 2020 City Council Workshop, the first one of the year. Will we all can stand for the votes for Legis?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Seated. The first thing to discuss is we do want to excuse the absence of council members Nyhagen and Sherman. They are unable to attend today. And then we have some special time.
I thought we didn't take any votes.
What did you vote?
Well, how do you excuse?
We just mentioned it. But it's time for open office of council members Peterson and Seldine. You get to have a sitter.
All right.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, say your name.
I, Nelson.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington and all local ordinances. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of city councillor for the city of College Place according to the law and the best of my ability. Congratulations. New term.
There's a little bit of hysteria that was going on.
Somebody was giving you the giggles.
Her daughter wanted to take a treat there.
She made the cookies. The brown ones aren't for anybody eating them. Or even if you don't.
Okay, moving on to workshop topics. First item on the list is Census 2020. We don't forget, Miss Sydney Whitmer.
Whitmer.
That's right.
It's okay. I don't think you've ever heard my last name, Norma. So, thank you for having me. This is a little bit of preaching to the choir. I think Norma's already met with my colleague Juan Sanchez. And Mike was kind of in on the ground floor with this census effort. Some of you may know that our part of the state didn't do as well as we would like. We did not ace the 2010 census test by any means. And particularly some census tracts in other parts of Walla Walla County, not so much College Place. So, the governor asked the legislature for some funds, and they set aside almost $16 million to encourage those hard-to-count areas within the state to educate and do outreach to the citizens of that area, the residents of that area, to show up and to be counted. And so, because we have such significant philanthropy in our area, the Sherwood Trust and the Blue Mountain Community Foundation got together and said, "Well, let's put some money together, hire someone to apply for those office of financial management funds." And they did, and they brought together some folks, and Mike was one of them. About 15 people who got together, and we worked together to put that grant application. And we were funded. So, we established the Blue Mountain Complete Count Committee. And it's grown and brought together some stakeholders who, it's not rocket science. We know what it means. We know how critical a complete count is to our area, what is, you know, what's contingent upon an appropriate count for our community. So, we've had some success thus far in encouraging community members to step up and volunteer to help us with this effort. And that's one reason why I'm here, to encourage all of you to raise your hand if someone asks you to work on behalf of the Census. I do have some packets for you, and I'm using one of them as a sample. So, and I'll, Mike, you already know all this stuff, but I am a little short on them. So, I'll bring the two for the absent members, and I'll get yours to you in just a minute, And I'm just working more in a consulting capacity with BMAC. I did put together apparently a rather ambitious plan. So, it included hiring one person, and that's Juan Sanchez, and his card is in your packet. He is working with the Garfield County Commissioners tonight, so he's unable to be here, but he's doing a great job. And once we had this project together, we realized that we needed a few more boots on the ground. So, I'm assisting Juan in sort of a, you know, consulting capacity. And then we have lots of people who are working along with us on the Complete Count Committee. In your packet, there's a map. And it's not a great map, but it does, the good news is that College Place is right there. And the lighter blue color shows that this is the Census Bureau's Hard-to-Count map. So, the darker blue you are, the poorer job you did of counting your census tract in 2010. So, you can have a better look at this when it gets to you, Michael. I'm sorry I didn't give you yours.
I'm sharing with Lauren.
Oh, okay. And what that means is College Place is essentially primarily the Census Tract 9201. You don't have to remember this, there won't be a test. And Walla Walla County is composed of 12 census tracts. Some of them did adequately, some of them did quite poorly. Some of the, and the way that the Census Bureau counts that is there's an initial response. The initial response is anywhere from 0 to 100, obviously. But that means people self-report. "Oh, I'm supposed to respond to the Census." They do it right away. Then the next response is with some sort of encouragement. And then the final response is with adamant encouragement. And so, this year, the Census is all online. You probably know that. You probably know a lot more about this than I'm sharing with you. And that will be a considerable difference for us, probably to our advantage. We do know that a much higher percentage of homes in our area have the Internet than most of us realize. So, there are no census tracts in Walla Walla County that have less than 89% of Internet access. So, part of what we've spent money on are laptops and we'll be using, excuse me, we'll be mobilizing our laptops and have, people have access to those services. So, if they can't get to a computer, they'll have the means to do that. The city of Dayton, for example, will have a computer up in their lobby all through the census period. We'll make sure they've got somebody, volunteers or paid staff there to assist. The Y MCA is going to have a laptop, probably one of ours, maybe one of theirs, in their lobby. So, these are some examples of how we'll assist people in accessing the Internet if they don't have access to that. I'll just give you another idea of what you have in your packet. So, you just, this is just like the Cliff Notes. One of the things the city of Walla Walla is doing is putting articles in their newsletter and online to remind people about the Census. We have a website, we have a Facebook page, we change that frequently. We have essentially a flyer for every population. Everything is in English and Spanish. We have the capacity to translate into Russian if we feel we need to. We're now at the point where we're addressing groups like yours, but larger groups as well. We're working with community organizations to address their staffs, to, you know, infiltrate their newsletters, their websites, their messaging, their clients, et cetera. And that's going very well. Let's see, what else was I, had to make sure I told you? The timeline for the Census is a little sooner than people realize. So, even though Census Day is August 1st, I mean April 1st, here. Is April 1st, April Fool's Day 2020, you can actually respond to it before then. So, you'll be getting your postcard in the mail, which is addressed to your home, and will give you your identification number. It's obviously not addressed to you by name, but by address. And we'll encourage you to go online as soon as you can. So, you will get that between the 12th and the 15th of March. And you can do it right away. The system will be set up for you to respond that soon. And it's interesting, if you look at the calendar, they're not going to leave you alone. So, between the 12th and the 20th, you'll get your invitation to respond. If you haven't responded, even though Census Day isn't until the 1st of April, you'll get a little reminder in the mail between the 16th and the 24th, so that everyone's ready to go on April 1st. If you haven't responded by the 26th of March, between the 26th and the 3rd of April, you'll get a postcard in the mail as a reminder. And then well into April, you'll get another reminder, and by the end of April, you'll get a paper, you'll get a paper questionnaire. So, people don't have to respond online. There are three ways they can respond. They can respond online, and if that's resistant or not a manner in which they want to respond, they can request a paper, a paper response. And the questions are in your packet, and that's it. 10, 10 questions. They don't want to know how many bathrooms you have, they don't want to know your sexuality, they don't want to know whether you're a citizen or not, they do want to know your ethnicity. So, this tells you what the questions are and essentially why the government is asking those questions.
Cindy, you mentioned the three ones. One is in red, one is online.
Right. And then if neither of those work for you, they will ask the questions by phone. And you can make that request. Pardon me?
Is there a mobile app?
Well, that's a good question. Juan knows the answer to that, and I don't. So, I'll find out for you, and I'll have Juan let you know. Actually, yeah, if you have the Internet, I mean, if you have the Internet on your phone, there's no reason why you can't respond. I think there is a mobile app, but you know what? Don't quote me on that. I'm going to have to find that out for you. Pardon me? You might just find it faster than me.
It says mobile app Census Bureau, there's one hit there, so.
Good, good. Okay. I think most of you probably understand what's at stake here. Essentially, for every uncounted resident in our county, the computation is approximately $1,910 in everything from roads to Title I to you name it. There's a, I think a good publication in your packet about, it's called What's at Stake for the State of Washington, and it's really quite good. We did one, Lauren, you might have seen it when Juan did the presentation for the BMAC Board, and we were able to zero in on what it means to the programs that Blue Mountain Action Council administers. And it was quite sobering. So, you know, we're all committed to this. And of course, then of course, the obvious question is, "So, how many didn't we count?" Well, you don't know what you don't know. And one thing the government does is as soon as that census count is in the books, the USDA and the various departments immediately begin developing their formulas and their funding determinations, and life goes on. And then the census counts are continuing to be, continue to be updated. But what happens is those formulas still are still in the books. So, your Title I formula pretty much remains that way. We would hope that they update it. We would hope that your USDA formulas are updated, but usually they're not. So, we definitely, definitely want to get an accurate count. As I said, 9201, which is College Place, and part of 9202, did really much better than the rest of Walla Walla County. So, you know, there must have been some good response 10 years ago, but it's a new day. Look at the difference in the residency of College Place since then. So, I'm excited about being a resident of College Place now. I'm excited about the opportunity for this community to demonstrate how, who they are and how large we are, so, large and in charge. You have questions? Yeah?
I noticed that homeless are not included in the hard-to-count list.
That's true. They are counted as a unit of themselves. So, that is similar to the point-in-time count that is done in a county once a year of the homeless. They will have their own point-in-time count. So, there's one day, which I believe is April 3rd, and they'll all be counted one time. It's the same for groups, resident groups. So, nursing homes will all be counted as a unit on one day. Hospitalized, veterans homes, those who are hospitalized. So, those are, and those will all be counted by Census Bureau enumerators. So, that's another thing. The Census Bureau is hiring. There are two recruiters already in Walla Walla. You can get ahold of them through Employment Security. I also, I think Juan has access, and Juan's card's in your packet, he has access to their email addresses and their phone numbers. So, they will, people will begin working April 1st, and they pay $16 an hour. Now, people always say, when they hear the census, the first thing they ask is, "Oh, are they hiring?" Because they always pay well. You have to be 18, you can apply when you're seven, if you're going to be 18 by April 1st. So, there will be a number of counters right here in our county.
Two comments quickly. I brought the question, I did the presentation of making sure that they count all of the college kids that are in town, and that's interesting. I don't like hospital, there could be 3,000 or 4,000 homeless, and it is appropriate to count them.
Absolutely.
People going out to those areas to locate them. The other thing I brought up at the end of the meeting I was at is this map is interesting. My understanding, that this will be somewhat interactive. So, when you talk about the waves that come through, this is almost, I'll say, a canary in a mine shaft type of thing, where you would say, "These are the communities that are, quote, lagging," perhaps, and it will give us an opportunity to go out into those areas. It's almost like a roadmap to see where we need to go to make sure that those.
Right. And they're, they're telling us that that will be almost immediate, within days. And we have a lot of faith in that. You know, all they need is one big glitch, and we're dead in the water. But that information will roll back to us. Our calendar shows that it'll start rolling back to us within five days. And if that's the case, and we know that we have a problem in certain neighborhoods, because those census tracts are very, you know, they're very blocked, they're very close. We know exactly where they are, and, you know, then we get our troops out, obviously. And yes, if a student lives here, nine months is the cutoff, and most of them do. And so, and thank you for, you referred several students to Juan, and he's already been in contact with them at Walla Walla University. So, we have students and staff who will work with us, so we make sure that they get the message, and they know that they're to be counted. And then they will be counted by enumerators as well, by the Census Bureau. Yeah. And, you know, I guess the other thing is, one of the things we have a healthy budget for, and for lack of a better word, it's called swag, the pens and the stickers and the magnets and the T-shirts. And we've taken a little different approach. We have lots of posters. So, if, you know, you need anything, or you know of anywhere that we may have missed, just let us know, and we'll make sure they have some. We also have flyers for virtually every population in whatever language. You know, when we're meeting with a farmer group, for example, there are flyers that speak to roads, that speak to ag, that speak to issues that they might be concerned about. So, we have all of those. But we're also creating things that particular interest groups say, "I think these would appeal to the people in our group." So, for example, one of the county commissioners in Pomeroy said, "We want to kick off on January 7th, and we want T-shirts for our elementary school children, white T-shirts with orange print." So, we went, "Oh, okay." So, this is all he wanted. He wanted all the kids to have this shirt. So, we said, "That's fine. You know, we'll have them printed locally, and we'll deliver them to you." And we have another group who wanted a particular design on their magnets, and so, that wasn't too hard. So, if you think of something that is germane to a particular interest group, we're not, you know, we're not doing 100 different logos, but we're finding that it's working. And so, we're in the game. So, if you think of something, you just ask Juan. He's enjoying doing that. And so, we had these pens printed, because frankly, the Census Bureau pens were not very good-looking, and they ran out of them anyway. So, we, so anyway, that's, we're having fun with that. Any more questions?
I have a few.
Yeah?
So, first I do want to mention that it's been great working with Juan. He's really is doing a really good job of communication and listening to questions, trying to get ideas flushed out. So, he's really, he's doing a great job.
Well, thank you, and thank you for being excited about it. I will say that the people didn't feel our urgency in September, October, and November. You know, it was kind of hard to get people excited about this. Well, you know, April, you know, we'll see you in January, that's when we'll get excited about it. So, it's January.
So, I believe you mentioned that you, that you all have a Facebook page?
We do, yeah.
What's it under?
It's just, it's under BMCCC2020. Same as our website, yeah.
Okay. And then a few questions regarding invitations that are going to be mailed out. Are they all in English, or are they going to be in multiple languages?
Well, you know what? I think they're all in English, which is unfortunate. I think everything that the Census Bureau sends out initially is in English. And they all go through the post office. So, this is where, it's not really a glitch, but it means that anyone who lives on a rural route who doesn't have, anyone who doesn't have post office delivery, so post office boxes, for example, doesn't get one. So, that means that those people have to be reached by the Census Bureau. So, they'll get phone calls.
Okay. Now, when they go to the website, do they have an option to choose?
They do, yes.
Okay.
59 languages, yes.
Excellent.
Hopefully, they'll find one in there, yes. Well, you know, but unfortunately, the directions aren't necessarily in 59 languages, so.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Great.
We will definitely get you information on our newsletter.
Right. And just know that I think Juan may already have been in, maybe with you, Mike, but somebody else. And so, he has everything electronically, he's got PSAs you can put on there, and we're updating our website, so you can steal articles from our website, whatever you need.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I took a little more time than I meant to, sorry.
That's fine. It's good information.
Good.
Any other questions or comments?
And Juan's really your guy. He's much better at this than I am.
Thank you, Cindy, you're doing a great job. Thanks for the swag.
You're welcome. There's lots more where that came from.
Okay, next up, we have Chief DeMorris.
I know, it's all over the dirt. It's pretty motivating.
So, I'm here to talk about ATVs and UTVs. RGWs 4609455 authorizes cities and counties to adopt or to allow the legalization of ATVs and UTVs to ride on public roadways. And the mayor invited me in, and Mike invited me in to have, start this conversation, because recently Walla Walla adopted or has to allow legalization of, is being all three vehicles to be utilized in areas of Walla Walla. So, what I did is I did some talking points, and I also posted them for you with Pyrolink, so if you want to click out of those when you're off in search, and you're happy to do that. I tried to post a few different things. I want to start out with, on the last page, it shows the difference between an ATV and UTV, and what the legal requirements would be if we were to make a decision, or if you were to make a decision to legalize this for the city of College Place. The ATV, or you know, ATV is generally a single rider, it does not have the locades you are required to wear a helmet. This is not a legal version of the ATV that would be legalized. That's part of the problem. So, it's really important that if this wasn't become legal in College Place, that really quick the information happened, because there's a lot of requirements to go into legalization of these vehicles. You have to have a helmet, you have to have windshield, you have to have working lights, traffic signals, brake lights. You have to be licensed, you have to be legal on 35 or less, you have to have a working horn, they have to have DMT approved street tires, and a muffler system, so that they are allowed to sit in. The same thing for the UTVs. The difference between UTVs though is a side-by-side, you have more than one person riding them. They do not require a helmet, but they do require a seatbelt, and then all the other requirements are the same with the windshield. Now, that's not a street legal UTV, neither one of those are, but they were readily available on the Internet, so I grabbed them and posted these talking points. There, on the top page, there's a great example of a legalized UTV, it's right there. So, license plates, street legal package, you can see it's got brake lights, it's got rearview mirrors, ID mirrors, and that person needs to go for their requirements of their city and town. So, when I started doing my research on the legalization of these vehicles, there's, every article I read was basically saying reasons not to do it, and just for the safety reasons. And one of the biggest reasons is these vehicles are made to be off-road, not on-road. Some interesting data that came out of this, ATV fatalities comprise about 1% of all traffic fatalities, which doesn't seem like a lot, but if you look at the numbers, it's, they had 3,400, 3,400 fatalities during, between 2004, 2013, when they did the studies on whether the ATVs should be utilized on public roadways. In the state of Washington, there were 48 of those fatalities for that study period. 87% of all fatalities were operators, and 13% were passengers. The interesting stat that I found, I was talking to the mayor about this earlier, is that only about a third of the fatalities involved in second vehicle, most of these were drivers. about a third of the fatalities involved in these second vehicles, most of these are driver's cars. So there's something about, there's, I don't know what it is, but there's something about getting on these vehicles that, you know, the government particularly wouldn't expect to do, they're not super smart on these things, you know, by the way, for public roadways. About 300, on average, about 300 ATV fatalities occur in the United States every year, and that number's increasing, because of the more and more new reason for legalizing. It's kind of the thing to do right now with the prices of gas being so high, and trying to provide alternate mobility for people on our communities, which I understand. The problem I have with these is, is just that, we have an increase in danger, increase to our community, and I don't think it's safe to stay to do for traffic saving improvements for our community, it's really not. Fifty-four percent of people that were using them on public roadways were killed at night. So there are some considerations, if you were considered to legalize these in our city, that there may be some requirements that you might look at. Thirty-nine percent of fatalities involved in impairment, which is staggering to me. So thirty-nine percent of people who died on ATV accidents on public roadways are impaired, compared to 23% of fatalities of passenger cars are impaired. So for some reason, people feel like they can get on these things from a bar or restaurant and drive home. And Mike actually commented that when they legalized this in cold facts, they saw a huge increase in DUI arrests because of, on ATVs, yes? Yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of folks going on law courses, they felt that it wasn't a motorized vehicle, the same way a car was, so they thought it was a drug-related vehicle, like an ATV. And you can do all the educational and role on that, and folks still then fans, so I mean, our numbers jumped by about 15%, I would agree along that, so.
So obviously, you know, not surprising, the fatalities in the summer months, when people are more likely to be on ATVs, the fatalities increase at night. So there's a whole bunch of data here that you can look at, do your own research, I don't want to sit there and give you all the information. But I think that, you know, if you're asked my opinion, is it something that we need in our town right now, I would say no. If we were to do it, I would definitely have some strong restrictions. I would be more likely to approve a UTV than I would be an ATV. They're a safer vehicle, they're more of a D-buggy type vehicle, they have more safety equipment, and there's better street legal packages for those. And I would also, another recommendation would be restrict them to the hours per day, just like since 8:00 and 6:00 PM, just day and night hours, because that would greatly increase our, or decrease our chances of fatalities, according to research and data that's about to take place. There's some very reputable organizations here that have some stuff. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration does not recommend, the National Institute of Health, their research, does not recommend it. University of Iowa studies suggest, recommends laws and regulations to restrict ATV use based off of the data that's happening out there. And it's, the numbers are increasing greatly, because the New York City Council, City Council operates UTVs, City of Walla allows UTVs and UTVs. So these are definitely things that we need to, we're going to look at. So. Questions?
A couple of questions. Is there a way to restrict it to, like, your, your neighborhood or something? Because I really worry about some of my students who will throw their dad's ATV up in the back of their pickup and drive it up here, and then they and their friends, that's their new thing to do at 2:00 in the morning.
Right, yeah, we can do whatever we want. The RCW allows us to adopt whatever organizations and or rules of desire. There are, there are certain requirements that the state says that you're not allowed to, so they have to meet those applicable standards. So we can restrict it certain times of day, we can restrict it to a certain part of town, we can do whatever we want with that.
Maybe see 25.
Well, you, you can make some certain restrictions, I'm not sure about age restrictions, but...
Well, we've made an age restriction of 18.
Yeah.
Also, one of the primary rules of traffic engineering is that roads are safest when there are fewer varieties of vehicle on roads. So like, if you have mostly trucks, or mostly cars, it's both safer than about half a mile. And so adding in a completely new category really has a tendency to, to increase that. And I looked a little bit, I didn't have time to look very long, but the key number is fatalities per vehicle while driven. And I can't find that anywhere.
For ATVs?
No, for, for any type of vehicle. Because, so for example, if you say we had 500 deaths this year, and 400 deaths this year, you might go, oh, we had a great, we were way safer, but as it turned out, for some reason, people drove so much less, there was actually more dangerous for trip, or for why.
Yeah.
So, so that's the, the metric that traffic engineers always use, and I can't find that.
And they look at it versus rural, versus metro?
Yeah.
Some of that data is available. In fact, the ATV fatality study that is, that rural area ATV fatalities were higher in rural areas than in rural areas.
Well, and I think that, those kinds of things help with pulling in on, you know, what's causing the different issues, and ways we change it, but still, 300, it may not sound like that much, but when you think about, compared to cars, how few miles these vehicles are driven, especially on roads, my suspicion is, they are significantly more dangerous than a car.
They are, because you have a less likelihood of surviving them. They probably fall in the same category as a motorcycle and cyclist.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, there's...
Theoretically, they are.
And some of the data in here is about, they have about 100,000 motorcycle trips a year from ATV accidents, so it's, and it's, the majority of the fatalities are occurring on public roads, so rather than off.
Yeah, but I imagine most of the miles are probably off.
Two quick questions. Go ahead. So if Walla Walla allows this, and let's say, for sake of argument, we don't, what challenges will that present to you? I can see someone coming over to College Place, backing the wall on...
Happened last week. Officer Ling was stopped a couple of young men on ATVs in the city of College Place. So, yeah, that's definitely happened. And the other issue is, is that these guys are going to be grabbing their ATVs out of the farms, because they use them on the farms, and they're not legalized, they don't have all the licenses, so they're going to hear that they can ride ATVs and UTVs in the city, and that's what they're going to start doing. So there's a lot, it creates a problem for the police departments to try to manage this a little bit. So there's, there's a period in time where we have to do an educational campaign and whatnot, if you're going to be allowed to use ATVs, we can significantly change laws. And I looked at Walla Walla's, I think you have it in your folder, Walla Walla's slideshow, and there's just not information in there. There isn't have any discussion or any data, or it just says, you know, they allow, they told you to adopt the RCW. And you mentioned that they restrict ATVs, well, the RCW says ATVs. I'll tell all that's...
So a couple of quick questions. One, is there anybody in the community that has voiced the desire to have this law created? If it's not coming from the community, I'd be reluctant to go ask, because there will be people who have these, who'll say, hey, this is great, I can go to Walmart, buy ATV now, parking is easy.
Well, I understand there hasn't been a legal outright for us, and, you know, we're 4 square miles, we're under 4 square miles, there's not anywhere in the city you can't get to by walking, if you have to, or by bicycle. So I don't, I don't see the, 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 the need, I think we're trying to meet a small minority of people who are wanting this, rather than the majority. Because the majority of people, I would say, it's just me, Mike, and you, that would say that, you know, talking to my service about it, before you come up here, people don't like single drivers, right? The majority of people don't like single. They're like, wow, you know, I see them racing down the street, they just seem like a dead man. And, and, you know, I, they're, they're fun, I've worked with them, and, you know, and my personality would not be a good move for me to be riding ATV in the city of College Place, so.
I also see, there's nothing out there that I could say I could agree, there's small endings, like Waldo's and things like that, they're, I'm guessing, mission components, car last, I mean, this just doesn't seem like, I mean, I'm happy to discuss it more, but on first blush, this is just not for the city to kill more of our citizens, and I'm reluctant to do that, if I'm ready to agree with them.
I had one inquiry, which is why I brought it up, we might want to address it, not so much because we have one inquiry, but because now that Walla Walla isn't allowing it, I knew that people were going to be crossing over into College Place, so we needed to get some kind of status rule of whether we were going here or not that way. It can be enforced, but we're...
At least understand.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. I think it's an opportunity, huh? Let's go.
Two comments. I appreciate you bringing it up. And two, I think it's in our strategic plan that we want to make data-driven decisions. I really appreciate the research that you did, and presenting us with facts about what it's like to drive things, these things, how safe are they, and that, so I just want to make that comment, I really appreciate that you did your homework.
You know, Target Zero is the strategy that the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's trying to implement, and as well as the state of Washington, and that is zero deaths and zero injury collisions by the year 2013. And if we implement this, and we're, the city of College Place is kicking butt at improving traffic safety, that's been one of our roles, the police department, is to improve traffic safety. And I just believe that if we allow this, when there's really not any need for it, that it will send us backwards, not in the future. So I would say at this time, my recommendation, it's your decision made, is not to enforce that.
And, and I would just say, from personal experience and professional, where in cold facts, where it was thought that it was a good idea, they actually have the, it was a tough decision to have, where if the liberty wise and just craziness in general, uh, increase, so I would not recommend this. There have been some residents that reached out to me while I was riding on the job, this mainly on the fringe of our community, so like, I have been free the night, I'm 12, but I, I mean, our community's only 2.1 square miles, so are you about to get a bike or a walk or something?
I suspect the people who are coming from Walla Walla into our city that want to drive to, you know. So do we have any guess or idea of how many are, I think they have to be registered, are we registered with the surrounding city of Walla Walla College Place?
No, I haven't, I'm not registered.
That's fine. Do they have any other questions or comments? This was great information, thank you so much. I'm moved, because I'm going to take next steps. Okay, moving on. Mr. Gordon? You're going to discuss the stuff you've proposed, like, studio, I mean, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Lisa, could you pull up exhibit two, maybe, to start with? Thanks. Yeah, this is a, anytime we have somebody with a development or a lot requesting access off of an arterial, we're obligated by our code, municipal code, chapter 1624050, to bring that to council for your approval. Arterials typically are large roads, and we try to preserve the free flow of traffic through those roads, and we do that by limiting access, and in many cases, they'll have alleys behind those roads. In this case, we have an adult family homeless requesting access. My initial inclination was to recommend denial of access to that arterial for the reason that it is an arterial, may have an alley. However, our primary marshal is concerned that it may be difficult for them to respond to that facility, and so I am, we're just approaching you again, giving you a heads-up, that at the next council meeting, we'll be approaching you, basically recommending access to the arterial for 134 Southeast 12th Street. You'll see up here on exhibit two, the red lines represent our primary, our principal arterials, the green lines are secondary or minor arterials, and this particular facility is located on 12th Street, which is a minor arterial. I'd just like to show the bigger picture, in terms of our transportation grid, that when we do look at a facility, we do look at arterial access, we may be thinking about the whole network, the whole transportation network. So this is a street that reaches all the way into Walla Walla, and then a little bit to the west of College Avenue. Many of the homes on 12th Street already have access, because historically, I'm not sure, I don't believe it was an arterial all along, or for whatever reason, they were granted that. So this is not out of the ordinary, however, in the future, as we look at arterial access, I would recommend that council keep in mind that we are trying to keep our arterials arterials, and keep them free flowing. Again, there's exceptions to that, College Avenue is a principal arterial, and has lots of access onto it. So that's just a, kind of a background, in this case, we think it's warranted to go ahead and approve that access. So we'll bring that to you next council meeting. And then if you want to go to exhibit three, Lisa, this is just a picture of the actual access on 12th Street, right across from Birch Avenue.
I have two questions, actually. First, in that picture, has the addition already been, like, partly put on? Because I'm like, where are they at the footbore house?
The, I don't have the site plan here, but they're actually moving, they're actually constructing an addition to the front a little bit, it's not huge, and then also to the right. And then they're putting a patio to the left, right in front, I think it's right to the south of that red access area. So they're, they're branching out a little bit, not a lot.
It's a little bit challenging.
No.
My second question is, for a group home like this, it's, I was kind of surprised, is there not any requirement for two days of access?
Well, they would have two, they would have the front, right with the two. I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Seems like it'd be a good idea.
Yeah. Part of the challenge on this lot is that, if you'll recall, those homes are kind of did upgrade from the road, so even the access going up is going to be a bit of a steep climb for anybody. We do have a 10% restriction on grade-ons on driveway, so we'll probably enforce that, make sure that it's accessible, so.
So is that what the red square is, it's driving?
Yes, I'm sorry, that is the red square. Right next to it is a access, unapproved access, they do have a curb drop there for the lot right to the west of it. This access would be separate, maybe about, maybe two feet, three feet of separation between the two.
And this one will be caved?
Yes.
Do you know how many rooms it could have?
I do not.
Doesn't it say there's something, it'd be like six rooms in there?
Yeah, it's been concerned with parking, there's very, a lot of that, is that going to be a reason? Is that something?
Um, more so. Obviously, there'll be more parking, but again, 12th Street is, we have people parking there now today, so.
Unfortunately, it's like the same home where I live, most of them never get visitors.
Most of them.
Never get visitors.
So this is commercial residential, is that, is that, is it considered residential?
The theory is residential, but those adult family homes, there's like an exemption in state codes regarding those open, where you actually can't, they can like go wherever.
That's right.
Yeah, so our zone doesn't apply to those.
Okay. Now, is there any necessary service? Oh, physically there?
I guess, you know, generally, we want to discourage access, and it seems silly to me to restrict access when there's one like three feet to the left. On the other hand, are there any, like, negative long-term effects that we can foresee? Like, what's, I mean, our policy is generally to say, no access, and I imagine there's a reason for that, I'm just, kind of curious if you could explain that a little bit.
It's kind of an incremental degradation of the function of the road, so the more you allow, one or two probably doesn't make a difference. But over time, if everybody has access, and obviously, you're going to have more traffic, especially during high traffic times, late evening, early morning, the, so it's incremental. So if we start to allow one person to do it, and everybody starts to do it, well, how come he got to do it, I didn't get to do it? It builds up over time. Again, some arterials, you just live with it. And College Avenue is an example, a lot of our businesses, that's their only access. And in fact, we have to give access to lots. To the north on 12th Street is not there, we don't have a, an alley behind... To the north on 12th Street is not there, we don't have an alley behind those, those homes, so they have to have access unless they're on a corner, then they can go off one of the side streets. So if there's no extra access, they're going to be coming out there. It's just a guideline, it's a principle we try and follow. You have parking, if we do have parking there, it'd be, again, it's one of those incremental degradation of the function we try and stay away from. So if there's secondary access and it's available, my recommendation to you typically will be denied.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When will this be coming to us?
Next council meeting is the plan? Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm wondering, I'm leaving you up again. Well, we have Mr. Gordon and Mr. Harley to discuss the Savvy Sewer update.
Okay.
Who's going first?
Paul has motioned that I have the floor, so I will take the floor. This is the sewer main and system lift station that we're putting in to support the McCarran Christensen annexation and the future development in that area. J U B is our engineer and they've been working on that. The plan is actually to finish design and go to bid and begin construction if we can this year. If you recall, there is, Fred Meyer has expressed some interest in the development. Oops, maybe not. And so we're looking at trying to make sure we have a sewer in there soon enough to make sure that we can supply sewer to developers. The J U B team has met with us a couple of times in the last few months and I included those two meeting notes, those are in detail. So they're there for you to take a look at. Other than that, we're just moving forward and just pushing J U B to complete. So, are there any questions?
And I would just find record, this trunk line, it doesn't just serve the McCarran Christensen property, so since that exists in the land, it's pretty much a trepidosity. This is going to be conveying sewage all the way from commercial, right in minor road area, all the way out to the tree and plant. So pretty much everything aside for the devil on 12th Street.
Yeah, it's a major trunk line. Yeah.
So, a comment, actually I guess two comments. Macy's just announced today that they're closing in La La Wall, so you may actually get some more takers. But, and so I'm really happy that we're doing this kind of aggressive, you know, preparing for places. I noticed in one of the comments that there was a real misunderstanding of our code on septic's. Because it said, you know, we have a requirement that you have to connect to the sewer, but we haven't been enforcing that if you already have a septic tank. Well, there aren't any already septic tanks out there and they won't be allowed to build it, but they seem to have the impression that, oh, anybody that wanted to there could just build a septic tank and not connect to the sewer and...
Correct. And those are, there were a number of misunderstandings, I think, in the comments that came from that particular agency. And John Record reviewed those and when he gave his, his notice and his determination and non-significance. So you're right, there's some misunderstanding.
Well, and, and so my, I guess my question is, so how can we educate so, to get past that?
I think probably the appropriate response would be for us to respond to this commenting agency directly and just explain to them that there are really no homes out there, they're not on septic and that that should not be an issue. Normally, our planning director is the one who kind of carouses and takes care of those, but I can mention that to them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Some other, some other things I'm going to mention with this project, there is a new housing developer that's out of Spokane, Tri-Cities, that's trying to get their sphere of influence out here. So I am trying to get them to buy them a book for private partnership for them and go along with it. So we're going to see what we can do on that. However, if it does have brick wall for some reason, we do need this regardless. So the idea that they have to, because it's a little budget, is we'll go the forward in the county 209 for some money and then bond it and then make the money back on priority for assessments. So just be aware of that, because I'm going to really try to get that housing developer to do it. But apparently the housing developer, I guess, got a similar project up in Hablemane though, so they're being a little skeptical at the moment. So if we can overcome that, we may need to take the bull by the horns and just do it.
It just seems to me very important that, you know, that trunk line, that station, what do you call it, has tremendous value to the future of this community. We have to remain committed. And I know we have to be circumspect about talking about people might occupy a commercial retail type activity, but we have to remain committed to get. It was really unfortunately lost and retarded. We can't afford to do that again. I think this is an opportunity. So I heard a little stumble there in the floor, but I think we need to work that.
I, yeah, I just want to reiterate that I think our timeline on this is that if I can't get the housing contractor to sort of have a private partnership, if by this summer, I will try and get some of the grant funded from the board. But the remainder, we have a budget to do like a bond issue and we're going to have to do that over the summer so we can get going. Because in the general understanding, that's a big box, the, what they wanted to see was basically by the summer of 2021, that there was a function in the lineup of some sort there. And then if it ended, it was going to be made done where they would get the property and either they would do what they need to do. So we just have to stay in that all hard.
Okay. And along that line, I was a little concerned by the comment that they weren't sure if they could get it out by this summer.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I'm like, I was just prepping my lecture on, you know, faster, better, cheaper and time scope and budget. And I was thinking, is there something that we could do? Because that was like a huge red light to me.
Yeah. So. And, and while we continue to have those discussions, pretty, pretty much what we're at on that is as long as we can at least get something out by the fall, and we aren't putting down pavement or concrete, I mean, this is a pipe underground, so it could, as long as we aren't in a major blizzard, we should be able to do it over the winter. So I, I just think we really need to keep everyone's nose to the ground so we can get it done. So.
You're going to be getting that contract and award.
Yeah, exactly. So they'll just be on, to get the engineering done by the, they're working on it. So that and the bells are our two key priorities, so.
The challenge will be during the winter, the dewatering. It's a deep, so that'll be, we'll see, that's where that goes. The other thing that's important is to realize that that, that main also serves on the other side of the SR 125. So depending on what happens with the UGA and anything along those lines, that's a supporting element, that's important, so.
Well, and it also just kind of gives us a little bit more redundancy, makes us more stable. So it has a lot of reasons to put that back in.
Yeah, I think we're stepping forward in faith to invest in our community, but we have to make sure that there are investments coming because there is going to be what's going to pay back on the turn.
Yeah.
Otherwise, then a lot of that would have to happen.
This, I think, is one of the issues that we've looked at, is the payback is so big. Lauren?
Just a quick question, no specifics, but with the change in closure of the Kmart and ShopCo, I'm guessing that there were appraisals of what the College Place market may have offered. And I'm wondering why, so your thoughts on this, has that, has that changed? I'm sure it was an overall business in the valley equation for a lot of perhaps these businesses that were looking at our account. But with the closure of those two, is that, is that changing materially, that calculation? Quick, just service thoughts on that.
Well, yeah, we just prepared for economic development fires when we gave up for 2020. And if you look at the, the retail leakage because of the closure of Kmart and then ShopCo's actually signi-, very significant now. So I actually, for quote them, for example, our leakage to Tri-Cities actually more than double percentage wise, where the leakage, I quoted them alone, went up by about five and a half million dollars. And then with like groceries even, because ShopCo and Kmart did carry a bit of assumption of that, the leakage on that actually went up by another three and a half million. So, so we definitely have the market and when, and when you look at where businesses are located, yet they tend to locate near other successful businesses where I am. So that, I mean, not to put down the escape, but the issue is now the Kmart's gone, sure the community college is out there, but there isn't really a lot happening over there. And most of the investment has been over in the town center and then, which is right up against our border, and then the Walmart area and Meadowbrook. So when I talk to the folks who actually do want to invest in the valley, this is the side of the valley they want to go. I mean, honestly, we have way more development already happened, but the big issue is, I would say, prices, some of our landlords are demanding, and that's been shooting us in the foot. But if it wasn't for that, we'd actually have quite a lot of other stuff already. So the market, the way we do the valley, is on this side, so.
The paper had really good numbers here today, talking about the leakage, the macro level. Very good.
The one thought that I've been having lately, when I see all these big box stores closing, I, I think we definitely in the valley, we need at least a couple of them because we have so much. But I can think about the big booksellers and how it used to be that, you know, there was lots of Barnes and Noble and Borders everywhere. And then Amazon came and everybody's like, well, brick and mortar bookstore are dead. And interestingly enough, yes, Barnes and Noble and Borders basically wiped away. Independent little bookstores actually have been taken off. And, and I think in this valley, there is room for the boutique as well as the big. And I think we should kind of try to go for that too.
Well, I mean, that catalyst program which we're proposing for Pal Jam, that gets to heart of the town because honestly, the Barnes and Noble and Borders, it isn't so much that the big stores are failing. If you look at the ones that are failing, it's actually the ones where instead of being just a formal corporation, they're being bought out by capital firms. So pretty much any of these big boxes, as soon as a capital company acquires them, they basically suck the life out of them, they have a little debt via leverage buyout and then file bankruptcy, take the money and then run. Because that's what happened with Toys R Us. If you actually look at what they were selling, they actually were very profitable until the end of the capital company bought them, did a leverage buyout, pulled off the debt on Toys R Us, filed bankruptcy, took the money and then ran. So, so most of these big boxes that are going away, it's actually a leverage buyout by a capital company, it's not the big box failing. And unfortunately for Barnes and Noble, that's actually, it's probably going to happen if it doesn't, because the capital company just bought them.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this topic?
Great.
All right. Mr. Gordon, you want to do an update on the water system consolidation project?
Certainly. Lisa, could we go to exhibit one? Yeah, Mike has asked me to brief you folks on where we're at on our water projects. That's the consolidation project as well as well number two. There's actually two agenda items, this is the financial position, the next one will be on our schedule, we've broken those up. So here, in this exhibit, you'll see there's on the bottom, do I have a pointer? Here we go. Is this where?
Turning on. Sorry.
Got it. Whoops. There we go. Okay. So here we have, starting out in 2016, we had Anderson Perry actually give us what we considered at the time conservative estimates for both projects. And our estimates for both the, what we call the consolidation project up here and the well number two project down here, this is the Maple Street project, were relatively low compared to what we're seeing today. In 2017, we went out for drinking water state revolving fund loan applications. And at that time, they had frozen the amount of monies that they would provide to the cities at $3 million per jurisdiction. We actually overlapped two years on that, so we were actually able to get two sets of loans out. But during that time, RH2, whom we had brought online as our design engineer, went ahead and we did the applications based pretty much on what Anderson Perry had already given us without a lot of in-depth engineering, because they hadn't done that yet. Comp 60% design, they were able to delve into the actual cost a little bit deeper and they came up with some costs that were substantially higher, especially with the well number two project. This is when they're getting their, their teeth into the actual grid of what these projects would cost. And then Comalook Water Main Project, those costs were further developed. And then finally, we had our bid opening that we had to reject just, what, a couple weeks ago? And that gave us our first picture of what the real cost of the wellhouse was, what we're going to be coming out at. So there's been a number of things that, that have happened. Inflation has been a part of it, this has been a long-term project. We've also had some increases in the well drilling contract, which have been substantial. We put in a stainless steel liner, that cost us about $150,000. We put in a cap between some of the, a formation seal is what they call it, to keep part of the formation stable, that cost us a pretty penny. All told, you add up all the extras in this drilling contract, we're at about a little over 30% of what the original estimates were, the original contract. And so that's a, that's a chunk of change. And so they've taken those, those increases and they've kind of applied them in their estimates to what we're going to see in well number two. I'm not sure we're going to get there yet, there's still drilling, we don't have a stainless steel liner, we have it as a, an addendum that we can take advantage of, but we don't have that in place yet, we haven't finished drilling. We're down about 700 feet. So, and actually, I'm supposed to talk about that in the next agenda item, but bottom line is increases have gone up, mostly related to the well drilling contracts and to some extent the well, the wellhouse that we're seeing come in. So we'll be, and again, I'll be addressing this in the next agenda, we'll be looking at a new contract award in the near future on that, so. Let's go ahead and I just want to go through, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So when you say wellhouse, what all is included in that?
The wellhouse is the physical building that sits on top of the well shaft. And on top of that, you'll have the well motor and down it will go, you'll have your impeller at the bottom with your spiders that keep it off the sides and so forth. That, and the...
The pump part is part of the wellhouse, not part of the well?
Yes, and that includes the electricals, controls, variable speed drive, as well as your diesel generator, that whole piece. There's also a chlorine contact chamber that's a part of especially well number one slash four, that's put in underground for contract, chlorine contact on. So it's the whole piece outside of the actual shaft itself.
Sure.
Yeah.
Did we pick the wrong venue? Should we stay at Anderson Perry, or did they, or did they support it?
The only, probably the only increase in costs that we're seeing over way be what we saw with Anderson Perry, be the design contract and RH2 seems to be within the costs that we've already, that they've already proposed. The other parts are what, they are what they are. It's when you do a bid, you get the lowest bid. You're really not going to come up with lower contract costs unless the design is elaborate, beyond what it needs to be. I don't think we're there. I think it's a, obviously we could just put a hut over a shaft with a building with a pump on it, but these are pretty expensive facilities, so.
So long-term investment.
Yes.
30% variance, maybe we're comparing that to already, but I'm kind of, I do not, in all fairness, read every day that he said. It just felt like a very large variance compared to the original estimates. And I know this is new, nobody's built wells before, purely kind of cheap, but I'm surprised they don't know.
Well, and what I think back to is all of the delay caused by the year without a capital budget.
Correct.
And I feel like that we should be like bugging out these costs. And you know, I'd like to send them to Mark Schessler for the bill, but you know. But at least more kind, send them to AWC and ask them to give that to other places as well. And just let the legislature know, this is what it really cost us when you didn't do your job one year.
Point well taken. In fact, we went out, if you recall, with drinking water state revolving fund loans, stage two here just recently, and I'll show you some of those numbers in a minute. Those will help us if we need the monies. I think we may be sitting pretty okay with the consolidation project. So I'll show you that in a bit. One of the things I do want to mention is that as we're going through the contract, well number two drilling contract right now, we're going to be very close to the current authorization for that contract. We'll see where we end up. It depends. So we may end up coming back. We did this for well number one as well. We may be coming back and saying, hey, we're going to need a little bit more. In that, in well number one's case, it was a lot of it more. In this case, it may be hopefully not as much more. But we are bidding up against it. I just want to mention that you may see us back up asking for further authorization, so. Anyway, if we'll go to, I think exhibit four. Exhibit two and three are just the breakouts that RH2 provided for revenues versus our costs. You're welcome to look at those. But I think this is probably the more important slide to take a look at. What I've done here is shown our revenue for both projects and our total, our expenses and what we've paid out to date, what we have yet to pay out on both projects based upon original contracts and RH2's, I'm sorry, RH2's estimates. You'll notice we have a negative number here. That means that our revenue right now is actually exceeding what we expect to pay out, which means we're in good shape. Okay? We do have a supplemental loan that we've requested from Department of Water, I'm sorry, from DOH, that they are telling us we'll probably get, and that has a 50% forgiveness clause. The problem is, is we may already be funded on this. So we put that loan in. We actually got some estimates, I don't show up here, that were very, very, very high from RH2. And that came in just before we gave you the budget. And we kind of stood back and said, oh, this isn't good. And so we stayed with the original costs that we had provided to you earlier. And we're actually still fairly close to those costs. So we put these supplemental loans out and requested them because the deadline was right there in front of us. We had to get them in based on those estimates. And so we think we're actually going to be offered this. You don't have to use it, but it's there if we want it, which is good. We also have a $4.5 million water bond that we can tie into, but the return, the loan rate on that is, or I should say the bond rate is a bit higher than the DOH loan. So we would not use that and we'd retire that bond and instead use these loans if we had to. Okay, same thing is true with well number two, except that we still have about a million dollars sitting out there. So in this case, that supplemental loan will be very helpful in making sure we can pay for that. If we don't get it, which I doubt that would be the case, we would still have the water bond to fall back on. So I think we're funded. We should be okay. But I do want to show that we, outside the forgivable portions, there is quite a bit of loan that we still have to pay back, so. Any more questions on the financial status? That's a lot to take in.
The thing I do want to mention with Lucky's projects is typically the laws, these are like once in a 80-year projects, except we have that one for two and three at the same time, so. That's why as we're trying to give you all answers, it's taking a bit of us really refine stuff because most places don't have that kind of bad luck, so, yeah. But once it's done, we'll be good that way. But it's just keep in mind that typically, you know, we have two loans going down the, it's more scary.
And future generations of city administrators and engineers won't have to worry about this for quite so long.
Well, and they will thank us because not only will they not have to worry about it for a time, but we're also set our rates where we can set aside money so people have money to be able to do.
Yes.
So our grandchildren will be happy.
And further considerations, we also have a wastewater treatment plant that is going to be very costly at the same time, so. Got hands full.
Last minutes.
Yeah.
All right, now we can move on to the consolidation project. Sorry, I was kidding. Thank you for keeping me in line.
Okay, so this particular agenda bill is just the timeframe for completing these projects as opposed to the financial status I just talked about. In this case, we're looking at, we were hoping to have well number one at CCF online by the beginning of July. That was really what we were hoping for. And now it looks like it's going to be August before we get that online. Part of that is due to the fact that we had to rebid the wellhouse. Now, we're actually having a pre-bid meeting this Friday at 2:00 to make sure everybody understands what they need to submit and there's no questions. I believe Mike is going to be videotaping that, recording it and doing whatever he can to make sure it's in the record. And then on the 17th, we are going to, the next Friday, we're going to have a bid opening for that contract. And then we should be able to let that contract. In keeping with that, because time is of the essence, we're going to ask council to consider, and this is one of the later agenda items, I believe, tonight, to consider a special meeting to award that contract a week early. The reason for that is July, August is the high demand months for water in our community. And every week counts and we'd like not to play Russian roulette with it. So that's kind of where we're at with well number one. When we talked to RH2 about well number two, our anticipation originally was that we'd have that project done by the end of this year. And they're pushing that out quite a ways based on what they saw with this project. And where now we're looking at, I think it's May of 2021. It's not as critical that we get that well online if we get this first, the CCF well on, but it's a bit disappointing. But a lot of it's due to the fact that a lot of these pieces of equipment are long lead items. They're custom-built and you have to order them. They're not ordered yet. And so that kind of pushes out the timeframe for completion. It's kind of, it is what it is. We are, we may possibly be able to reduce the May 2021 date by, maybe it'll reduce that down a month, month and a half. But giving away contracts usually go, I'm not sure we're going to see that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be hopeful for that.
I have a, I still have this question. When we rejected the last bid, Mr. Trump, is the, question, this is the second one that we've had to in the last few months that we've had to reject. Is there something odd about our process that we need to reconsider?
We're thinking it might be something in the water? Just kidding. We don't know. And in fact, we've, you know, we've kind of, we're not sure what the, we, as we've talked to our design engineers, they think possibly that what's happening is you have contractors playing a little loosey-goosey with the numbers because they're trying to get a lot of work at the same time. But this contract, I don't see why that would have been the case for this particular contract, so I'm not sure why. It also depends a little bit on the contractors themselves. If they're, if the folks who are bidding on these contracts have a culture of trying as hard as they can to get that contract and throwing out protests, they will. And I think we've maybe run across a few of those. In fact, one of the contractors that we forced to rebid last time who got the bid is now subject to the rejection of this recent bid. It's the same contractor is kind of involved. So I don't know. I don't know. They're not the ones who did the protest this time, but they're the ones who would have had the contract, so.
Well, the other thing I would say is bids, especially for this well project, are a lot more complicated, have a whole lot of requirements that they had to submit. And so they might have submitted a part, but they didn't submit the other part. It's just a mess. And so I think the best thing we can do on our contracts in the future is that we have a page that literally says this, 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 or don't submit. You know, and so it's very clear. There's no misunderstanding. I think that, and that's what we asked our contractors to put in this bid, is that list.
Yes.
What contractors expected to provide.
That's great, because that would be a, yeah, a perfect solution to avoid this in the future because I'm sure it was uncomfortable and sad for everybody all around. Plus it puts a lot of pressure and pushes timelines on you all, so. And a little embarrassing for you to have to keep doing that, so I think that's a great solution. Thank you both for working on that.
The other thing I would say is what I want to say at this pre-bid meeting is I want to, I want to let the contractors know that they should have their documents ready, their submittals ready to go when they're awarded, so that we don't waste time on their part at the last minute trying to get their submittals in. They could be ready to go on these submittals. And I think we need to put that out to the contractors to be ready to submit, to make, to provide their submittals to the engineer once they're awarded the bid. Because a lot of times that delays it that much more.
I guess what concern I have, they, we talked about the other well going on in the future years. Is the August 1st, I think you already answered this question, but is the August 1st, is that a hard, fast deadline to them? Or how would you characterize that?
The way the contracts work is they'll be given a number of days. I don't know what the number of days is in this contract. I don't recall. Once we give them notice to proceed, it might have 130, whatever it is, days to complete the contract. And they've got to do it within that time, less unworkable days because of winter conditions or whatever. And there are some days that they can't work and they're not charged for those days. So it will be hard and fast in terms of the number of days, working days are given per the contract or else they end up in liquidated damages. One of the things that we've talked to RH2 about is can we get the well producing even before they may be completely done with the project? So in other words, the vital, critical elements there, maybe we just turn on the well and it's running. Maybe we don't have the BFDs, variable frequency drives completely hooked up. Is there a way to get the thing online before the whole project's finished, maybe by two or three weeks? So maybe in July, we might be online, but the project may not be complete. Does that make sense? At least it'll be operating. So that's another thing we'll be looking at, possibly doing. Again, I'm not sure how feasible that is.
I didn't know what we dreamed of wells again this summer.
I know. We want water, yeah. That's the other thing, that's the other thing that, you know, I hope we emphasize at this meeting and at this, you know, Friday with the potential bidders, is that this is a public health issue. This is, this is not just to play around with bids. This is not to just, you're dealing with people's lives. And so we're going to press that point as well.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Wintel, you're going to show this city prosecutor contract number.
Thank you. So with this item, this is just an addendum to the contract of Ree Caldwell. So she serves as city attorney, but then also prosecuted attorney. And there was a request for additional compensation on the city prosecutor side based on the number of work hours her office has conducted on this and then also clearing the backlog of cases from the historic, historically from the previous city prosecutor. And then there's also been a pretty significant increase of cases just as our police department is growing and additional activity has transpired here. So the increase was from 1,800 a month and she was requesting 3,050 a month. And how we're identifying and paying for it is partially through the budget was adopted. And then there's also programmatic efficiencies that Ree has been working on as well. That'll cover all of this. I think the key thing to show that this increase is warranted is I did a little quick comparable analysis. And the interesting thing is that even with the increase that Ree is requesting, we are, from the cities that responded to my request, we would still be the lowest ones compensation-wise for city prosecutor. So right now, we're at 1,800 a month, proposed 3,050. The nearest ones is Othello and Airway Heights. But as you can see, everyone else is higher than that. So I definitely believe that the 3,050 a month is warranted and Ree is prosecuting the cases in a timely manner. I can speak from experience dealing with the prior city prosecutor's office. There's quite a few cases end up languishing, which cause a bunch of issues. And now we're catching up on that. So I just want to bring this to all your attention because this will be on the agenda the next meeting for passage. I just felt it was prudent to present it this meeting though because it's just a little weird talking about a contract in front of someone who it applies to. So if there's any concerns about this, please let me know now. But based on my analysis, I feel, and the performance, I feel it's warranted.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Cleveland?
I'm just glad we're not paying as much as union gap.
Yeah. If you look at the case volume in the union gap, it's pretty shocking because of the Valley Mall, Costco and all the commerce, so.
I think, I think it sounds like it's going to be a thumbs up then.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Wintel, you're going to discuss council rules comprehensive document. And you can put a lot of work into this, so thank you.
Yeah, so I took all of the variations of the different rules that have been adopted and compiled them. I also included them here in your packet so that everybody can see what all was here. I compiled them into one document so that it's easy to see what all the current rules are. I made it also a, if you want to stick with what all the current rules are, I prepared a resolution that would basically repeal all the old ones, create the one new document that has everything that's currently being done. The only big change to that would be we had a little bit of a conflict because the council rules resolutions spoke to the meeting dates and times, which are also set, which are set by ordinance. And so my recommendation with the compilation of the one document is to remove the reference to specific dates and times and just reference that it is set by ordinance. So then when you're, when you change that through an ordinance, you don't have to then go and change the resolution, which we did not do. So we actually currently have conflicting information in the resolution and the ordinance, so.
You know, I'm not sure why, but I stumbled across last week, I think it was something out of the Spokane City Council. I had to save my, I'm trying to pull it back up. But it had to do with the public speaking time. And we, you know, we had a nice lively debate about that last time. That was good. And it was interesting. I think Mike, in the state of Washington, out there in Spokane, it was a case of at the mayor's discretion, if, let's say, five people were to show up, the mayor could at that point restrict all five to two minutes apiece. And so I don't know if that's legitimate or not, but it was something. So in that which, you know, we have the flexibility to override, it's on the website, it's on our application. Like you said, we have five, we've got a timeline, it's two minutes apiece, proceed. And so I just wanted to out there as something, I can give a copy for you, for everybody. It was, anyway, it was something I thought we could adapt here if we all, that would help out some of our concerns. that would help out some of our concerns. Yeah, right. So, you know, I, we can draw that.
After, that's not included in here because after the previous discussion, I was under the impression there was no desire collectively to change that. So, but that would be a real quick, if you sent me that information, it would be a real quick modification.
We can discuss it and see what people think.
Yeah.
Great.
My main recommendation is to, at the very least, even if there's future changes, to go ahead and form one consolidated document so that if you do want to make changes, at least you're, you're looking at one place and starting from one place. And then when we updated it, we could update by changing a part, but doing a completely new resolution so that it's always going forward. If we change something, we renew the whole document so that it's not, because since it's by resolution, it doesn't affect our complication or anything like that. So it's, it's all internal work as far as, so there's no additional costs involved.
Awesome. Sure makes it much more efficient going to have to go from document to document to document.
Yeah, and I could see the committee, that was, it was, it took some work to compile all of that. And because, because of the timeframes of everything, things were done in different formats and different context and different, everything was, it took a lot of changing spacing and all of that and reformatting to get, even though you've got the same words, it doesn't necessarily look cohesive. So.
That's a huge job. Yeah, absolutely. Well, I also support sending it to the council. Sure.
So does it make it easier? Or you guys have talked about, I seem to recall you guys volunteering.
See, this isn't actually changing. The only thing it's changing is the reference to date and time. Nothing else is changing. This is just.
Those two are my purpose.
Yeah.
My point is that if you're going to make this change, adopt this single document, give it a rigor to do, anything that you want to change, change now. Do it all at the time, bring it back.
Usually in the EBITDA committee, we look to certain cities.
And I'm not talking about you. I've talked to those guys in the past. So I was excited for someone else to do it.
Many, many distractions.
I have a slightly different approach. I think it would be good to just do the good one. And then all of us as a council resolve to actually use it. Because I did this for more that I was on once and going back, only they were all in meeting minutes and going back and pulling out all the policies. And then nobody would ever look at it. So as we use it, then we will come across, these are the pinch points we want to change because this isn't working anymore. And I think we can change it as it goes along.
It's a bit of perfection at the beginning.
Correct.
That would be my recommendation because I know in all facts, there was the opinion waiting till it was all good. But then the problem is, you never got there. So I think it'd be good. So we actually have something on the record to adopt some of this one holistic document. And then as you're all using it, if there's issues, play out it, and then it can be further amended from the action, sure.
Didn't, though, sometimes the issues arise, you haven't had anything recent. But if you go back five, six years, there were a couple of pressure points. And what's interesting is, I agree completely with letting this then go. And then, yeah, but it seems like the points come, though, at crises almost, not at crises, but.
Yeah.
Like, can somebody phone in? That was, you know, the can, and they kind of can't, you know, there were those issues that we stumbled upon and perhaps, but, but nothing, nothing current.
As your population changes, your composition changes.
Yeah.
It isn't always so easy to change that document. You know, as the newcomer here, it feels to me like you guys have established a very cooperative, cohesive, organized style. It would seem, at least somebody should be looking at that and saying, hey, yeah, this makes sense. So on, this is obviously dumb. Let's fix it now. And then I'm not talking about fixing it. Just saying, hey, I understand nobody wants to read this because it's wrong with yours. I was just trying to, I still think we should.
No, we're reading.
Oh, yeah. I did not, if they come to me, I said, I was.
I think my counsel position seven was on that committee.
Yeah. Something was on your committee.
No, I don't like that.
So is it something you would like to see at the next council meeting? Or is it something you would like to have as an admin report at the next council meeting? Then think about action the following, or?
I'm just telling them, think it's that difficult for us to push it to another meeting. But we are missing three. Maybe we should push it because we are missing three because it's going to be difficult for them to go on it.
So we'll do an admin report next week with action, the following, provided everybody's on.
Anybody have any thoughts about that? All right, let's do that, please. And thank you again for bringing this, pulling these out and then putting them all together. Formatting alone is a nightmare sometimes. Okay, so we're going to go on to other business. First item on other business is a special meeting. Okay, so we're looking to, you said, you want to share that, or?
Well, Robert kind of referred to it basically because of the timeline with these contracts. The bid opening is too late for it to go on your meeting for next week. But yet it would delay an entire additional week if we waited for the second meeting in January. So what staff would appreciate is if you guys were willing to set a scheduled meeting, it would be a 5:31 again because of the fact that that's the same date as planning commission. So we could have a quick, short 5:30 meeting also on the?
21st.
That would be great. So.
Anybody have any thoughts or calendar conflicts? It works for Ree Tuesday.
So if I've got four of you here committing to it, we know we have a portal. Okay.
Sit my calendar.
Thank you.
We'll send an email, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I will send an agenda packet, just like always.
All right. I live by that, by the way.
Thank you. Go.
Okay, so last item on other business is discussing temporary mayor pro temp. I will be out next meeting, the council meeting, for a medical procedure. And I did have a discussion with our current pro temp, which is Marge Mahiga. And in consideration with her current medical situation that she's having and inconveniences for her, she was in favor of making a temporary pro temp